Do we have a motion to move the minutes? We can move together, not unless anybody has any issues with that.
So.
Okay, move Cardy, do we have a second? For Roberts, okay. Any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes?
Page one, September 7th. Minutes. Section three, second paragraph. Unanimous voice, road crew, commission members, Phillips. The commission members, Phillips, and I think it should become a member of Phillips.
It's also present remotely for Michelle, as much as she might wish she were remote. She was here. Right there, right after who was here.
Yes.
Dustin and Chad just joined us.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Okay. Dustin, you please tell us where you're coming, where are you attending remotely?
I'm attending remotely from the city of Denver in Colorado.
Denver, Colorado, okay. Chad?
I'm attending remotely from the city of Kepa, Lua, the island of Maui in Hawaii.
Can you spell that?
And you take your time to plan it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, I guess anybody else, I'm trying to keep track of the screen, so if I happen to miss something that they said, we gotta keep, if they're raising their hands, I guess they can.
And Mike will help.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mike, I'll try to keep an eye on it.
Michelle, did you get the two corrections to the minutes?
Yes, I did get, thank you, is there any other, are there any other corrections?
Okay, so then, on this one, we can do by a.
We have to do a roll call, now that we have.
Oh, remote, okay, we have remote, okay, so are you taking? Okay, all right, Michelle, could you have a roll call, please? This is on the minutes for both of you.
So this is a motion to approve the minutes of the September 7th and September 20th meetings, the September 20th was the joint. There were two minor corrections on the minutes. The motion was by Cardy and the second was by Roberts. Dustin Wise.
Yes.
Chad Hill.
Yes.
Jim Cardy.
Yes.
Kyle Marsh.
Yes.
Tom Phillips.
Yes.
Wa Hubbard.
Yes.
Matt Kowalski.
Yes.
Allison Healy.
Yes.
And Karen Roberts.
Yes.
And I forgot during roll call to call for the student reps, so I've been doing that. Isabel Mallett.
Here.
And Stuart Goldich.
Here.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so, and the minutes are approved.
The minutes are approved, yes, corrected.
Okay, thank you, next up is the approval of the agenda, can someone move the agenda, please?
Supporter.
Okay, I would support. Any changes to the agenda as posted?
Never met her.
Okay, we have a roll call, please, Michelle?
Okay, let's start with Alison Healy.
Yes.
Karen Roberts.
Yes.
Tom Phillips.
Yes.
Chad Hill.
Yes.
Wa Hubbard.
Yes.
Jim Cardy.
Yes.
Kyle Marsh.
Yep.
Dustin Wise.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda is approved, so public hearings, we have no scheduled public hearings for tonight. So moving on, our pre-rates citizen participation, we do not have any schedules for tonight. Reports of officers, chairman report. This was updated on the meeting with Saddle Township, but that's over.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, we didn't have enough meeting, so, um, I guess that would be it. Report was that there is no meeting last month from Saddle Township. So, looking around for planning commissioners, is there anything anybody think to offer at this time? Remote, except this year?
Yeah. Yeah, a few things, and I don't know, Michelle, if you wanted to talk about any of these, but we did approve the cure-to-cure site plan with changes to the sidewalk on the front, the, on the street-facing side. We are asking them to widen it so it looks more prominent, since their door is not facing the street. And also asked them to make a change to, what is, what did, what was that calling it? The temperature or the? Of the outdoor lighting.
So the calving temperature isn't more than 3,000?
3,000.
3,000.
Yeah, so he wanted it to be not, yeah, so they're gonna make a change to that.
So that the lighting had more of that soft glow as opposed to that.
Harsh white.
Natural blue.
Yeah. And then we approved the vacation of the alley of what, that's broad and.
Motion for. That was. Northwestern.
Yeah. We discussed barrier-free parking space at 150 Jeffers, we didn't come to a decision on that yet. We're gonna be taking another look at that in an upcoming meeting. And same goes for a discussion we had about the continuation of the social district, about whether or not to do it, or if we want to continue and just do it differently this year, or if we want to continue it at all. You know, we, we had some discussion of that, but again, no, no decisions yet.
Just a quick question on the social district, has council heard anything that you know, like complaints issued or anything? That you've heard from Michelle?
Yeah, I guess that's more.
Yeah, it's our, any show me.
Not since last year. It was, it was much more benefit for the neighborhood than for some of the other businesses. They could do, the district can just not do a tent and pull off the parking area. Or they could coordinate so that the district is open and you have a closing of the parking lot and tent when there are other tents on the town. It can piggyback on that. The, one of the good things about the social district and what the city can appropriately do is they get to set the when it happens. We have to find, we have to operate the parameters of control as far as your commons area and how that's all constituted. But the city can, can have a social district and decide when it's open and when it's not, so.
It is going forward, so it wasn't like a sunset issue just for COVID, was it? It's like a.
It goes through 2025.
Oh, okay, so there's kind of a.
You know, so you can have it on and off.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, any?
No, they, just to piggyback off that, we discussed, you know, how probably the most popular day for that was during the ICE Fest and that it was really beneficial for that day, so we had some discussion, we'll get it tied it to events. So we'll talk about that more and I'll let you know.
Great.
Thank you. All right, Michelle, anything from the?
There's probably a lot that I'll just report. We'll leave for another time. So we, we've had interviews for the assistant city managers. And we had two people for a second round, that, that second person was out today. And Justin is waiting to be making his decision of means taken.
I'm gonna take ten seconds.
So, are you okay, Kyle? Put your hands up.
Yeah, that's correct. Michelle, is that a assistant? An assistant.
Assistant city manager. So, so that's a legal. For the street reparking for the fall have been planted. Today was, they started last week, they finished this week. The rain will be nice for them. You should be, I should be, the city should be receiving the application for a initial resuming of 81, 80, 80 for proposed will agree. I think they're not going to quite be in time for the November meeting. So I think it'll be December. And you've got the other ones listed for the next, the next month. Let's find it right now.
That's good, thank you. Okay, let's see, we've got three. Assistant wishing to address the commission, we have checked remotely as well, right? Now, like, okay. Anything else? Yeah, I'm not seeing any. Okay, all right, so we're moving on, I'm Bishop, none of that tonight, so we're moving on, you business. Site plan, variety die and stamming, mine site plan review. So are mine.
So let's, let's start with. Let's start with planning and engineering. I'll just leave it at that, and let the applicant follow up.
Start with mine.
May I ask, Ms. Nelson, for Lauren Orman, this is combined engineering and site plan for proposed 4,103 square foot addition to existing facility for our guidance. The building has been expanded to Southern Village, the dumpster relocated with three full-on life. As well as trying to be storm-like and a test case then, we will move to the addition. The last, you saw this by the last night plan, last year, it was included by the council for lunchroom addition, very strong addition, January 25th, 2021. And the construction of that lunchroom addition is in progress. So keep that in mind as you go through your decisions tonight. The addition is gonna have two additional, or is for additional storage, two new scrap pits, which replace a larger existing scrap pit. That's proposed to be filled and covered with overhead doors. One new door, reinforced concrete slab and kind of the overhead doors and new lights to be mounted at the parking lot door. There's no changes proposed in circulation or parking onsite and they'll still have enough building. In fact, they're adding another roof. Really, my comments for tonight are limited to number one, to let you know that like parking is not changing. They still will have the 140 square feet parking spaces. Even though it's such, even though you have this big additions that where if you did the calculation footage, they would be required to have 145 spaces. But when you look at page one of the site plan, you can also look at what their peak shift is. And with those 86 employees, that would only require 105 parking spaces, so that they're, they're still in front line.
Real quick, Megan, Chad, does his hand up?
All right, I do. Could those who are not on the camera, I don't know who's talking, I presume it's Megan, but I'm not 100% sure, since I don't have everybody in view here. So.
Can you not hear, Chad?
Pardon me?
Is it the sound or that you can't see?
Yeah, I can hear, it's just that I don't know who's talking, I'm assuming it's Megan.
Does that, yeah, do you want to?
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay.
It's Megan Nelson.
Oh, Alison.
Nope, Megan.
Oh, Megan, whatever.
Our Lauren Orman.
Yep.
All right. Want to talk primarily about the landscaping and provide some things for your review and decisions. They're proposing four new Colorado spruce to a location to better screen the proposed dumpster. And then re-relocating that dumpster and recycling enclosure. The enclosure detail has some inconsistent information. Shows file tickets and top and bottom shelves, and then the other one, the overhead view shows that it's gonna be the amazing ring and the type and color to of the building basin ring. Section 319 requires that it's constructed with brick, we just, it's a small detail and it needs to be bundled up. Also, since the building is, increases the building area by 14%, technically the site plan needs to be brought into full compliance with the however, they were granted waivers before various additions. And we still feel like that's the spirit, but as you advise, and if you look at, staff does a great job describing that in their review. And we were mentioning the planning permission grant waiver, allowing the landscaping plan needs previous approvals at a minimum. In our letter, we flagged some inconsistencies between the lunchroom addition landscape plan and this one. At a minimum, it needs to come to the landscaping plan standard, we feel. And then also, when we went to the site, I saw a lot of, either there wasn't a lot of maintenance in Parkland Islands. There were some dead, there were some dead landscaping onsite that wasn't flagged and noted on the tree survey. We understand the site is under construction at the time and it's difficult. But this parking lot islands are pretty far away from where the lunchroom addition is. And we recommend that the applicant consider drip or automatic irrigation to guarantee the health of the landscaping in the Parkland Islands and the surrounding western Parkland. We also recommend that there be a more detailed maintenance schedule. They have proposed one for a maintenance plan, but it is just for the first, it's, it's just for the first year. There's nothing to say that there's maintenance by hickie, weeding, spring and fall, plumbing and cleanup. Yes, we propose the maintenance plan, I'm gonna pause. Mostly for the people who are watching at home. So as proposed maintenance plan, the first weekly can water it, water it for the first growing season and then it's silent on heating or anything beyond that, shit after one season. So to sum up, we recommend tonight that the planning commission make findings and take the following actions. Make findings and decide whether a landscaping waiver is warranted through some conditions of the site and then provide direction on the landscape maintenance plan. And then we have four items of conditions which are all pretty minor, except for that we have a condition, and the fourth one, that the landscape plan meets and provides details on maintenance of landscaping down first. In the first, and then including particularly the watering. That of course is up to you in terms of what you feel is necessary as prior condition of site plan. Happy to answer any questions or.
Thank you. You could ask any questions for Megan right now, or maybe shoot over to Marcus. See, okay, so, yes, maybe let's go through some engineering, thank you.
Marcus Backner with O H J. There's not a lot here from engineering perspective. Have our letter, they did a packet. Support 23rd. We want to point out, the stormwater retention is handled regionally. And even with this addition, they're still under their allocation for previous surface, so improvements are not needed for that. They do have to reroute a little bit to storm sewer, just to accommodate the addition, but they don't need to do anything upgrades. One thing I want to show, if you have more information on this, but whether or not they need a hydrant.
Yeah, I'll touch it, I mean, they're just.
The original plan proposed a hydrant. Excuse me, it's a lot there. If they want to go on that route, we have a couple comments, if they don't, if they can eliminate it and suppress the building in other ways, we. That's what the end of our housekeeping items. A couple of notes on the plans and providing some additional information on the other elevations. So that's really it, so there's not a lot here from engineering perspective, we feel that those things would be able, that's fair. Back to the plan for this action.
Thank you. So I guess the question on the hydrant, Michelle, do you have a little bit more information on that? Okay, so let's flip it back over to Michelle and hand it up, please.
Oh, you know, so Megan's laid out, excuse me, what's, what is being proposed in the addition of square footage and what their existing facility is, the zoning. Marcus had any of the issues she found in her review, as well as the onsite observation. Marcus has laid out the minor issues from an engineering perspective as it pertains to engineering standards. Excuse me. My comments are gonna revolve around just some basics. The scrap pits that are being identified or proposed. There are, there is an existing scrap pit that's being decommissioned. And then two new ones are being constructed. There's a lack of detailed information regarding these pits, such as their functions, the material, the materials of construction. Been able to determine with assistance from the applicant and the owner. The pits are for the scrap metal that's produced during the stamping process. The scrap pits are slightly angled locations for roll-up containers to sit on within the building. The depth of these permits, I'm sorry, the depth is a matter of about one foot, give or take, at the deep end towards the back. At the back of these pits, there's a trenchering system that plums into a crack which collects all the oil runoff from the roll-up scrap container. I'm sorry. The oil is pumped out of the crack into the underground storage container. Sure, the applicant has an oil collection disposal company, empty, empty and proper disposal on a regular basis. The depth of the trenchering system is approximately two to five feet. Any water that's collected in the trenchering system is also pumped out along with the oil and collected and disposed of by the same oil collection and disposal company as previously described. Please forgive me. Detailed information regarding the scrap pits, their location, dimensions of the trenchering system, I'm sorry, the location and dimensions of the trenchering drain system, the location and dimensions of the storage areas, the dimensions of the oil and water storage containers, the location and dimension of the spill containment system, and the dimensions of the pits, including the depth and materials of construction, have to be provided on a revised plan, as well as the location of any and all fordrings in the building. And then additionally, scrap metal must not be stored outdoors because of the corrosive because it can, the metal can grow when it gets wet and the net can reach into the environment and that's not good. There's determined in act, determination in action or direction by the planning commission needed prior to action on the plan regarding the landscape waiver. As Megan alluded to, in 2017, the applicant proposed a nearly 30,000 square foot building expansion. That expansion was greater than 10% was required in section 6.03. The applicant was required to bring the site into full compliance with the standards of Article 6. At that time, the applicant requested land, requested landscape modifications such as substituting one evergreen tree for five shrubs and credit for existing healthy trees. Planning commission granted the modification and the credit. And while the current addition is proposed technically triggers that same requirement, the site is well landscaped, although not as third-hand, but we'll leave that a second as well. Of greater concern is the condition of the landscaping. As Megan identified, there were trees that were observed to be dead onsite that are listed as healthy and serving. And then there's an overall lap of regular landscape maintenance. The proposed landscape maintenance plan, sheet seven, as Megan says, outlines the weekly watering for the spring season, but it's silent on needing a long-term maintenance. Section 612 of the ordinance requires that all landscape areas must be provided with a readily available acceptable water supply or at least one outlet located within 100 feet of all planted materials to maintain. Prior to action on combined plan, planning commission must make a finding and decide whether a waiver section 603 is warranted to bring the site up to full landscape standards. And two, to provide direction on the landscape, landscaping material or maintenance, I'm sorry, including the installation of a drip or automatic irrigation system to contribute help of the landscaping in the parking lot islands and rebuilds around the western parking lot. So what I've done is I've factored out the findings and determinations for section 603 as well as the direction on the landscape maintenance. And then when it comes to your actual motion, based on those decisions you make there, will inform what, what motion you make, at least in the first two conditions of approval or deny, depending on where you go. The other thing is, your findings and determinations on those two separate things, especially the direction of landscape maintenance, could be influenced and informed by what the applicant presents to you after my report. So, after hers, if you've got any questions for any of us, we'll let us take that.
Okay, so with that, let's go to the applicant, it's like Miss Bishop there.
Good evening, thank you for, I guess, looking at our proposal this evening. It's a pleasure to represent Variety Die for yet again, another addition in the Dexter community that provides for a lot of employees and continued growth in the industrial park. This 12,000-plus square foot addition is providing storage for Variety Die who is, again, continuing to expand in the community. As was stated earlier, we're not providing or not proposing any additional parking or stormwater management. But we are proposing to do some modifications to the dumpster enclosure and also for bringing the landscaping plan up to code. We did have a landscape architect go visit the site, so he redid the landscape survey and I'm not sure if he missed a few things or if things changed from the time he was there until today. But the architecture will continue to match the existing building and if there's additional level of landscaping maintenance requirements that are requested by the city, I, I guess I'd like to suggest that that may be included in some sort of a standard detail, but we're happy to comply with whatever those maintenance requirements might be. So thank you very much and we look forward to hopefully getting an approval this evening so that we can plan for a spring start out in the industrial park.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I think we can, we'll keep, Miss Bishop will be on the line, but I think with that, we can launch into our planning commission discussion in action. If somebody, so we do again ask, stated by Michelle on page eight of our packets, so you have, we do have a motion there, but I know there's some decision we need to make beforehand. So somebody would like to start out some of the special? That would be great. Yeah, so basically, first of all, that, we can take them at the same time, or somebody would like to propose action on one, we can discuss that first.
I think from my perspective, section 6.03 is appropriate. The real question is that I have is whether we require them to install a drip or automatic irrigation system. I'd like to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, so, um, Alison, did you touch that, you, we basically, the question was regarding the, for either the hose, addition of the hose bib outside, something to water it or basically the irrigation system, something like that to maintain the landscaping.
Do you have any view on that?
I, it's really echoey and I'm hearing impaired, so I'm not exactly sure what you just asked.
It, it was about the, did the applicant have a feeling on installing a drip irrigation system or a water bib outside, something to maintain the landscaping better?
I think that he would prefer a hose bib, but I think that's possible, definitely.
Irrigation system, I think would be more invasive, but, so, it sounds like the hose bib. Well, that there would be concern, but.
Irrigation system has been required in the industrial park in the past, so, I, I mean, this, being that this is an expansion, that's gonna be slightly more challenging to do at this point.
Thank you. So did that answer your question? Okay, additional comments, thoughts? So this, yes?
I agree. I guess irrigation is not required in the industrial park, but I agree that should be required here.
So for the whole, but wouldn't support the hose bib, that's right?
I don't know what a hose bib is going to do.
So, but let's step back.
Okay.
Are they going to watch wrong with the hose and water the trees?
The ordinance, the ordinance does require that all landscape areas be provided with a readily acceptable water supply. So that's a, that allows the flexibility, could it be a drip line, could it be underground irrigation? There might be another option. The hose bib, it has to be within 100 feet. Some of that landscape area is farther than 100 feet. The, their, the initial building when it was built and the front, I'm Bishop Serpug in Mill Creek, is automatically sprinkled.
Oh, so Allison, it is required.
Well, there's a source of irrigation that is required. Yeah, some sort, either within 100 feet, it sounds like hose bib or an irrigation system. Okay, and I go check this. Chat? Chat? You there?
He's raised his hand and then.
Can you hear us, Chat?
Again, now, my speaker got changed. I'm, if, if in fact ordinance allows, I think it would be better to put in a drip irrigation or underground irrigation system to expect a maintenance person to go out there once a week or whatever it takes to water plants on this, on its grounds. It is pretty unusual. It would not, I would think, wouldn't, after a while, it'd be one of those things that may or may not happen. So I would think it'd be much easier for the owner just to go ahead and put in an underground system of some sort.
I think that, and it looks like from what we're dealing with, at least the conditions on the site, it wasn't look like they have any, so I think that's kind of the crucial in the code. Does require something, so it gives us some flexibility, but again, I think even the majority of this would be even 100 feet from the building, so it wouldn't even qualify for the host. So it's not too much of a decision we have to make because the code requires it. Okay, so, okay, so. Okay, additional discussion, so again, Commissioner Cardy put out the waiver or supported the waiver of the section 6.03. So again, that would be with replacing any dead or dying things, obviously, correct? And then they'd have to, they could go forward with the waiver as the site is kind of planted today with any dead stuff replaced, is that correct?
I think what we've given in our letter is that it should be, the landscape plan that's attached to this site plan should match the landscape plan that is in the, was for the long-term addition.
Okay.
And there were several items missing from this one as compared to that one. And so I would say that the, the previously approved landscape plan should be adhered to and the waiver should then also be subject to that, that previously.
Okay, because that's one we've already reviewed, acted upon and we, well, again, it could be a different planning commission. So as a planning commission, we can go a different direction, but that was something that we did at that time was acceptable to us. So what was submitted here, like you said, again, in your packet, does not match what we approved previously. Okay, so.
I think it's about four or five items.
Right, but.
But I still think that that is necessary in order to keep the spirit of the waivers that that implies.
Correct, it makes sense. Okay. Okay, sure. Mr. Cardy?
Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, CWA, OHM, DAFD, reflected in the minutes of its October 4th, 2021 meeting, in pursuit of the requirements of article 1121 of the zoning ordinance, planning commission recommends approval of AP 2021.22-05, combined preliminary final site plan for Variety Die and stamping date is September 2nd, 2021, to city council, subject to the following conditions. Waiver section 6.03 shall be granted, conditioned on compliance, full compliance with the previously approved landscaping plan. The applicant shall be required to install a drip or automatic irrigation system to ensure the health of the landscaping and parking lot, it was in green belt surrounding western parking lot, and including item C through O in the recommended motion.
I don't, as stated on the record, that is acceptable, so. Okay, so we do have a motion. Is there support?
Dustin.
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's support? Okay.
I'll support it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and we have support. Additional planning commission discussion on that. So.
Is there any way to enforce? We're asking for re-improving what, whether water and water taken care of, but winning improving on a regular basis, is there any way, is that enforceable? Yeah?
I mean, yeah, I was going to say, yeah, I mean.
Okay, if it is, then we should keep it. It's really not.
It's probably a complaint driven kind of thing.
Yeah, well, there's a requirement to be compliant for landscaping.
Yeah, but, okay. One quick question. Sorry, did that, the issue with, but that covers the fire department because we've got both of those noted here. So the difference, and Marcus had mentioned as well, so that's covered, okay. Okay, so additional discussion on this item? Yes?
It's not necessarily related to this application, but it is related to this business. And if you go up on a summer's night, have to work to that side of the industrial park, that garage door, that loading dock door is going to be standing open and it's going to go. And I know because my parents used to live right over there. I'm sure there's some kind of noise or.
Is it the variety door or is it?
The back door of the, oh, no, yeah, it's, it's a great, yeah, that's what we're talking about. Faces right at.
Right, it's the ones that the plant next up to Baker Crossing. So.
So I don't know, I get it, you got to sleep cool and they're.
Measurements have been taken from different property lines. I know that people in Dexter or Baker Crossing can't hear, but it's under the number of the property. So it's like, it's like when you hear the beeping of the garbage truck backing up, it's lots and lots and lots away, but you can still hear it. It's somewhat annoying, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean.
Good below whatever our threshold is for the ordinance.
I touched it. No, I'll work on that.
Otherwise, this looks great.
Thank you. Yes.
Matt Chris raised the issue of mitigation, fire mitigation system versus the hydrant.
Well, yes.
So in the DAFD review, the fire department did approach the subject with the, with the applicant. And they have a verbal agreement. And so in your, in your conditions of approval, is the applicant show when we post dead-end water line and the fire hydrant and install a smoke and heat detection system for the existing building proposed to the commission.
Okay. No other discussion?
May I raise my hand?
What is it? Yeah, sure.
Here, I did it officially. Um, Michelle, did I just hear you say that we had to do the hydrant and the detection and notification system? Because that's not my understanding.
It's you're eliminating the proposed dead-end water line and fire hydrant as, as Inspector Dufflin had in his letter. And you're installing a smoke and heat detection system for the existing building and the proposed addition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Now I got that clear up? All right, so can we?
So the motion is, as Mr. Cardy had read it, was for approval. The waiver, section 30603 shall be, but there's also a condition on full compliance with the previously approved landscape plan. B, the applicant shall be required to install a drip or automatic irrigation system. And then item C through O, as stated in the staff report dated September 29th. And we'll go.
Chat, do you have a question or?
Yes, kind of a question. Since one of the scrap pits is being removed and since there's oils that have been dumped into these scrap pits in the past, I'm wondering whether testing is required, ground testing and any mitigation that might result from that? To question is all.
I'm sorry, Chat, I didn't need to cut you off. My conversations with the water resource commissioner's office, this project or in this particular property doesn't, doesn't fall under their pollution prevention program, at least not based on the information that we have currently. With the revised site plan, with the information that is identified as needing to be provided, that's when we'll know if there are mitigation measures that the water resource division has to come in. Okay?
Okay, with that, I think.
Okay.
Other motions, okay, please.
Okay, Dustin Wise? Dustin Wise?
I muted Dustin.
He hears Dustin.
Okay, we'll come back to Dustin.
Okay.
Chat Hill?
Yes.
Kyle Marsh?
Yes.
Jim Cardy?
Yes.
Al Hubbard?
Yes.
Tom Phillips?
Yes.
Karen Roberts?
Yes.
Allison Healy?
Yes.
Matt Waltsi?
Yes.
Dustin?
Oh, we lost Dustin.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll come back.
The, we can go forward, the motion as, is still recommended for approval based on, okay.
Right, the motion does pass.
Who's back?
Dustin is back, almost.
Well, we.
Okay, Dustin, can you hear us? Are you voting A?
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right, so with that, motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. I'm going to be on a new business, the smoking vehicle discussion.
Yep, okay, and let me get to this. Okay, so based on our discussion at your meeting last month, I, I attempted to draft the regulations per your input. Allow public electric vehicle station, I'm sorry, plug-in vehicle stations in residential, commercial and industrial districts and for review and dis, for review and discussion. There will not be a requirement for the development of new commercial, industrial projects or commercial industrial redevelopment projects to provide or even make ready the sites, but all new residential development will be required to be PEB ready. And so what I'll do is I will go through basically outline for that. I'm not going to review the other simple regulation. I am going to count down the fact that you guys have done it. So always you start with a really strong purpose and intent and, and it matches your, the direction we provided. That this is to remove the barriers, make it safe, convenient, cost-effective, but mostly to support the use of U V vehicles. I'm sorry, not U V, E V, E V. And then, of course, a variety of definitions. And these are all these, all these definitions you have seen, excuse me. And then the permitted locations, level one and level two stations, every zoning district, when it's an accessory to the principal permitted use. And then we call out specifically one family, two family, multiple family and mobile home park dwellings. And they're designed as private restricted use, which goes back to the definitions. And then installation is subject to a simple zoning compliance permit, reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator in accordance with article 2204B as we cite all of the administrative approvals. And then you've got your level three vehicle stations, which are permitted in the central business district, the village commercial, the village residential, the C1, the I1 and the R and D. And again, as they're accessories to the principal permitted, the difference with these is that they don't have the same restrictive permit as the residential because there could be situations where there is a fee. The readiness requirement for residential, again, that fits with your directions, is to accommodate the future growth and demand of electrical vehicles, electric vehicles. For non-residential, it's encouraged as opposed to required for anything that's non-residential. And then there's some language about what the standard could be based on about 2% of the total parking. And then there's a little bit more for if an owner decides not to, but they could get the site ready for it. And then there's that language and that example. General requirements for multiple family and non-residential are broken out specifically and they get tied to the parking standards. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. We then go into accessible spaces and those are accessible as inferior free. The lighting, equipment standards and protection and loose trees and then signage. It's all pretty, it's all pretty soft, which I think is the way you had requested, so. Did I hit the mark? We need some changes.
Great, and some, we can, when we discuss. Okay, so, yeah, part of it, well, we, we channeled you a couple times because part of it, it was a little bit more, you went through all different examples and I don't know how familiar you are with the N R B, but I brought up one of that. It was kind of extremely restricted as I had kind of said, and, and not based so much on use, but just like here, percentage parking place is banned, this is what you've got to apply. So I think we as a commission kind of said, we wanted to pull back on that, allow it, maybe encourage it, but not necessarily requirement in all the cases, so that's kind of the brief summary, so. Okay, yeah, so additional discussion along the ship, and Michelle has presented us here. Yes?
So I, I think it's great that we, we support allowing it and even providing some guidance. I think a lot of this, like 90% of it's really good. I have a problem with the requirement though. Like we don't require people to put a gas tank underneath their garage floor because they have a car that runs on gas. And I, I don't, I don't, you know, we sit here as a planning mission, talk about how expensive housing is and then the, a month later, we're talking about adding requirements to new housing. And I guess to me, this, the whole thing of, of an ordinance and zoning and health, safety and welfare does not align with a restrictive requirement to do something and to spend your money on something. An example of your, you know, that's going on for years is the fire suppression in houses. Even cities don't. Uh, even cities don't require that. That's a, that's a building, it's an argument that takes place at the building department level among code providers. Because some say it's a health, safety, welfare issue, others say it's not. So, um, to be required, having an ordinance requiring somebody buy something they may or may not want is absurd, and, uh, I get the idea that we have, you know, environmentalists, tree huggers in, in that group, and and that's fine, but I think this idea of spending other people's money is very problematic. And I think it would make, you know, a heck of a headline, uh, for council, uh, making something like this.
Well, I'll start off with this. Tom, you and I know each other, and we've been on the sport together a while. I, I think that tree huggers was very important. We don't call each other names on this board.
It's a general expression, it's not a name.
It's a derivative expression.
Well, it could be, well, some people would be proud of being a tree hugger. Absolutely.
I'd ask you to refrain.
Oh, sure.
I think it's a bit of a canard to say this is something unusual for some of those. I think that we have many basic requirements for new construction. Hearing that speech made me wonder, sometime back in the day, someone's like, a toilet?
Can't make anyone put a toilet in their house. Can use an outback.
I think that there's a lot of talk about positioning for the future and addressing things like global warming, but very low action. And I think that this is a really great example of why. This is an extremely minor requirement. It is putting an electrical plug in a garage. The same electrical plug that's required for a trial. It, it is literally the minimum thing we could do to encourage electric vehicle use in this town. And electric vehicles are something that have benefits for everyone. Benefits for the environment, benefits for parents' wallet. And I encourage you all to vote for. I have to say, Michelle, I think you did a really tremendous job of that. I think you gave us a very broad presentation a month ago. We gave you a ton of feedback. And this is, it's really clean and it's really focused. And regardless of whether we go with residential requirement or not. Just a great thought, great notes.
Um, additional conversation, yes, Karen?
Yeah, I will speak to the residential one, to, to, most familiar one. Thank you, guys, and the question is, we're let's say you're in a built house with a garage, why, you don't need it?
If you, right, if you don't have the garage.
You know, maybe people still sometimes may do that.
But, yeah, I think as Jim said, it's, it's not, we're talking about whole charging thing, we're talking about.
Yeah, you know, and it seems like everything else, like, residential's in its own category, and then you get multi, and then we're getting more of these things, because the dollars are larger and it's not one family kind of doing this, so. Yeah, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't like that it's applying to single-family homes.
Residential.
But take that with a grain of salt, because that's
But that's why. We're doing it right now. It's not that expensive, it's a few hundred dollars more. So, it's not, I, I just can't lay at a, see, a housing, so my housing costs that the fund that require. Um, this kind of additional wire, it just isn't that expensive. And I think the whole point is cart force chicken analogy we do. Why don't people get, you know, electric vehicles? Well, there are probably many of these, but why is? I don't have any luck, so it's too hard, I'd rather just keep getting gas. And the more, the more accessible, you know, charging stations are in general, the more attractive electric vehicles. That's, I think that's what's driving this requirement, that kind of thinking, the one, make it easy for people to have those sorts of vehicles.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, Tom, I, I'm sorry, and wait, Chad, sorry. I, I know Chad's had his hand up for a little while, then, sorry, Alison, and then Tom, sorry.
And so, as an example, toilets would be an example, ironically, uh, there's no requirement or ordinance for a toilet. Uh, you have to have a certain type of toilet or a certain flow of toilet, that's all building permits stuff. So, the zoning ordinance is not normally used to require somebody to buy something. It's, it's used for health, safety, and welfare issues to guide uses. So, this is a, to me, is a fundamental misrepresentation, misuse of, of our authority.
Okay, thank you, um, thanks, Tom, and then we'll go, so Chad and then us.
Uh, Michelle referred to these, this as, has soft, um, take, or someone did. Which is, um, which I agree with, it's not specific. I, in a lot of ways, there are questions that I have relative to what this equipment might look like. Um, and therefore, if you're gonna put one in a, a level three in a downtown location, I know Kyle and I were kind of discussing offhand. Uh, a little on the side, last meeting, that these things can look like gas pumps. Big and lighted, and how much light are they gonna have? Um, and, and boughards on either side of them, for instance, to protect them, I mean, that ends up being quite an installation, and it's likely to be a very ugly installation, so, is there, is this too early to be considering these things and perhaps building them into, um, the ordinance?
I don't think so, I mean, I think this is part of the time, we need to address those kind of issues or concerns, if it is a concern. Um, and I don't know, Michelle, so basically, uh, the location, would that be more your concern, that, that, like that, that station, the, of where they're putting that, the charging station or something, if it was at the back of the curb, it might be less invasive, or in general, is it concerned about the size? Or both?
So, under the equipment standards, it talks about the charging station outlets, connector devices, um, uh, being no less than thirty-six inches and no higher than forty-eight inches, um, from the structure where mounted.
Okay.
Equipment mounted at pedestals like poles, boughards, or other devices, showing designed and located is not to keep pedestrian travel or create trip hazards on sidewalks. Um, and then added a battery charging station protection such as concrete filled steel boughards showing use. Currently may be used and used in lieu of boughards. If the battery charging station is set at a minimum of twenty-four inches from the face of the curb. I think some of that is, um, discussed about where they're located, so not in the middle of a public street or sidewalk, or street in the guts.
Twenty-four inches, if I might interrupt or interject, and I apologize for stepping on your toes, Michelle, if I did, but twenty-four inches is not very much. Um, any pickup that backs into a space is gonna knock that thing over, like, there, now that it's gonna have, be armored by bear, boughards. Making a little fortress thing there, maybe not, um, but just a comment. And I, one last comment that I noticed, you might check on page forty-two there, I noted it, um, it looks to me like a typo. Um, let me see if I can find it. Something along motive, purpose, I didn't understand what that meant. See where it is, um, wait a minute, what did I say, forty-two, yeah, forty-two.
And the definitions are in the permitted locations. I'm sorry.
Electric vehicle that is stored on board via battery for motive purpose.
Yeah, motive, yeah, there it is. Top one.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Motive, motion.
Motive, oh, motive as in motion.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Yeah, um, Dustin, then, you good, Chad?
I'm good.
Okay, um, yes, Alison, you had a question or comment?
I just had a question. I thought that in the meeting last month, we talked about if it's gonna be applicable to single-family homes, would it be all single-family homes, or goes inclusive of?
It's like new.
Any new, maybe, and it's on a site plan. Or, or an individual. That's how I interpreted it.
Yes, that's right, that, that's the way, so even like the infill development, whatever, maybe, around, so not just site plan.
Yeah, to me, on a site plan project, yeah, another hundred dollar plug is not a big deal, like, still think it's kind of a big deal, so somebody's building an infill house either, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, understood, big question, um, yes?
Um, one thing I wondered about that's not in this, and, and you, you'd mentioned in your presentation and show last week broadly, that to sort of conceptualize, um, as an alternative to gas stations, that there would be a kind of, an industry to have charging stations. And I, you know, I was wondering if we wanted to sort of address that, I mean, I was thinking the, a likely place for the, uh, the level threes might be existing gas stations. That then they decide, okay, they wanna do that, and they've got the stack and parking and all that stuff to, to accommodate that, but we don't have any. We, right now, we don't have, maybe this is not the place, but we don't have any provision for that as a type of business.
Right, um, the discussion, as I recall, and the input that I remember writing down, was that there, there isn't that commercial movement yet, because there aren't enough vehicles to make it profitable. Um, and, and I remember we talked also, or the conversation came around to, if you think about convenience stores and gas stations, the gas station doesn't make profit, that's why there's convenience stores with that. The electric vehicle charging stations, it's as fueling stations. Is probably the same thing. Uh, where they're going to need it to be with a, with a convenience store. Uh, we could put some language in here if we wanted, that this ordinance doesn't envision uh, the standalone gas station type station, some kind of language that would allow you to, if somebody were to come for something like that, to amend your ordinance to be able to structure regulations to address it. And I can work with Megan on something like that.
Yeah, and I think that is correct, though, correct summary, sorry, Joe, and then, um, because, right, I think we did agree to kind of hold off on that a little bit for now, as this, let's get this kind of, does enable it where the people want it and allow it to use. But, kind of hold back on that for a little bit, because there's maybe some things we don't know quite, but, yes, Jim Carty?
Well, first of all, I think that additional language would be great, but, Michelle, I had a question, if it was to my own assumption, and you tell me if I'm right, which is under the proposed like, we have now, if a gas station in town wanted to put in a type of recharging station.
This would be just, just an, um.
Just confirmed.
Okay, additional, yes, Karen?
Sure, I have just a few thoughts. Um, okay, so, to chat, and I was discussing about the looks of these things sometimes. Um, you know, I, I could see if there's a bunch of these things out by the sidewalk, out by the street. I don't know, that seems kinda, it could be kinda odd.
When you say out by the sidewalk.
Are they not out by the sidewalk, or do these all have to be within the properties a little, these won't be in the right way?
So, the city is not putting any stations in any public area at this particular time, that's not even above the radar.
So, if somebody wanted to put something out by their parking spot in front of their house, they would, you can't put it in the.
No, and, so, a station for a residential is going to be in somebody's garage in their car yard, yeah.
So, okay, so then, then I'm fine, I was gonna say, maybe we don't have some kind of landscaping requirements around these things. Um, okay, the next one is, is there any other, are there any other planning items which cause the city to go into a house which has been built, to check and I don't?
The city does not allow you, what would happen is, um, i- if somebody bought in their, their plans, their plans would have to identify either on the mill or something, and then, um, building department would be the ones that actually inspect to make sure that, that outlet is proper.
Okay. Um, I think that's pretty much it, I mean, the only question is lighting of these things, I mean, are they backlit? Is there glowing charger?
So, we ask for site lighting, shall we provide in where electric vehicle charging stations installed, unless charging is detected, but this is only. Um, and then your lighting standards within the ordinance as far as, um, and down the face, and.
Shiny extensions.
Photometric, uh, like trespass.
You can't put a spotlight, I'm sure that on it, and I don't, we do that, but. Yes?
Well, I, this, I, I, um, I was sort of had the mental, uh, picture of them being on the sidewalk as well. If, if any of the businesses wanted, in the central business district, wanted to do this, where could they or couldn't they?
Only if they had land, um, private property and no, none of their private property come includes in public sidewalk. So, all sidewalks behind the street building, um, to the south, that's all public property. Um, as far as the sidewalks, on the north side, um, you don't have a sidewalk system behind them. You put any sidewalk system around the public, so.
So, effectively, no.
No. So, think of, you, you know, the, the, the pub has that space behind your building, you're in private space, if they wanted to do a vehicle station for themselves, they could do.
Oh, and Chad, and Chad Hill, yes, you have a hand up?
I won't shut up, but this will be my last one. In regards to lighting, it occurred to me that, uh, a light could simply be a colored light on each one of them, much like, uh, the safety, um, on U, on U of M campus, if you if you're in danger, you can, you like, but just a light that indicates that this is a charging station and everybody knows that color, rather than lighting the, the, um, the entire charger, something like that.
The ATM machine.
Yeah. Anyway, that's a thought.
Yes, no, good, thank you. Okay, um, any additional feedback? Yeah, thanks, Michelle, I think, you're right, you did a good job, you said it, but you did a good job, because we were all wanting to place it, but.
You all saw it was a long discussion, but it really was quite easy to digest it.
Okay, good.
Um, and thankfully, we have recording, because we do go back and look at it, um, so.
Okay, good.
So, the question of that is, are you prepared to schedule a public hearing for November?
Um, I, I feel, I mean, I know you have some disagreement on the climate, but I think is, is your other feeling, at least, I mean, set a public hearing one way or another. So, we're not voting to approve anything tonight, but, um, so, what's the, we wouldn't, we don't form a motion, we.
You don't need to form a motion, but if you're ready, if you're okay with it, then staff will go ahead and schedule a public hearing.
I mean, yeah, okay, I see. Go schedule.
Well, yes, I, I would like.
No, it's a good point, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, and we'll, I still have debate about next, next month as well, so, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, because it's not voting to approve anything, even next month, we don't have to approve it.
Correct.
So, okay, so, is that kind of the feedback for now?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you all, um. Okay, so, moving right to the next business item, the business would be the, uh, the update for the subcommittee.
Um, this, this is Megan talking.
Megan's talking now, Chad, Dustin.
Um, so, with that, tonight, we, um, had, we went through, um, proposed articles on parking, landscaping, and literally been on some, um, and so, um, on parking, um, I think people were pretty much in agreement about, um, some changes that were made in terms of bicycle parking, um, but, um, I forgot only what we talked about in terms of parking.
Talked about reviewing the table of space required by use and very much a waiver to approve and make modifications. Like question, construction parking, possibly maintaining control or where have it permitted, possibly building a construction.
Taking that provision out of the zoning ordinance, rather than right now, there's just a really flat, that construction park needs to be off, needs to be in offsite, off street parking. Um, which it was pointed out that that may not be feasible.
With the neighborhood.
So we had a more robust um, discussion about landscaping, um, and uh. Also, I think the main team somewhat decided which that recommends species list, um, instead to to take that out. Rather than, you know, we had, we had proposed to split them up based on like, street trees, the street trees go here or go there. Um, and instead just, you can leave those recommended lists, but they're not required, there don't have to be a waiver, the application doesn't play, doesn't play in. To keep those lists, but they're surely recommendations and not something that means force it ever. Um, and then, um, talking about, um, also tree preservation and how that incentivized that. Um, and then also, um, tree replacement, and instead of, right now, you can, um. It's instead saying that the tree, if you're, if you have replaced the trees. Right now, you want it says, the zoning ordinance says that you have to follow landscaping, plus all the replacement trees. Um, and we see a reason of the subcommittee that, um, we should do eleven fifty percent of those replacement trees also. Um, be part of. Countable and required. Um, so that we're not, because sometimes we're we're packing them in and we're issuing a lot of waivers. And that is brought for applicants, and so it's it's easier if we can do it better. Um, we some direction to go back and look at buffers, um, and then we discussed science briefly. We mostly talked about the Main Street banner, um, which we decided to not handle at that. At that meeting, and that's present best for your city attorney into that, um, but zoning is not the tool to regulate that based on current. And billboards, um, that. Cause you only have one billboard, our recommendation was just to take this billboard regulations out. But that one we grandfathered in and not reforming, um, and then not real, just take that out and not have any more. Because it's an offsite and you can't regulate offsite versus offsite anymore.
But can we just take billboards right out, we have for a while?
And and I ask that question because you set up the regulations for the site. And you can only have X number feet high, if it's a ground sign, X number square footage for site area, if it's building mounted, same thing. And so if you've got.
So we're not banning billboards, we're just making parameters that signs have been here to.
Correct.
I have to say this, I have some experience with billboards, guys who, that's their whole practice. They are wildly ones who spend their lives looking for loopholes that they can land in, so. I can't tell you how to be careful, but I can tell you, you really want to be careful.
And that's another reason for your city attorney.
Yeah, at least just looking at.
Okay, um. Question, that's sorry, did you interrupt anything else?
No, next, next month, we're looking at subdivision control ordinance, and we have some direction from all the subcommittee members. Do you have any opinions on what should be in the subdivision control ordinance, and again, that would be a new subdivision was built. Probably in the case of Dexter, if we're in a station, either residential subdivision, commercial subdivision, or industrial subdivision. Love to hear. Prefer label next week.
Great.
Just email me or give them.
And I I really appreciate you guys looking at those buffers too, and that requirement, because, right, I'm usually like pro landscaping, put as much as possible, but I know we can grant those. Because in certain cases, we said we've had the mitigation issue that is on top of the other requirements, so I know we've had sites where. They're, and then we grant waivers, and then, like you said, it's the applicant doesn't, we're we're, why are we doing this if we're. But it's only on certain sites, so that's why I think it's like, it's very important in some, but industrial parks are a great example, I mean, I think it's still important to a degree, but, um. But still, that that's great that you guys have been looking at what we've done as a as a case study, so. Thank you, any other questions, comments for the zoning? Chad, Dustin, I don't see any hands out there. Look for Megan. Okay, well, I guess we're done with that, so, alright, moving right on, propose business for next. Business, um, sorry, for next meeting, um, number first, so committee report again, of course, um, public hearing, oh, amendment to the uncoordinated, can you give us a little to do?
So, remember they wanted to do this nice little um, entrance speech in the.
Yeah, I was.
So, um, they they're going to be asking that to help you do that. They made some minor changes inside that really don't affect operations or anything. But the the fact that the, you know, this improvement to the outside, um, they don't want to, they don't have to do that, that's what they're coming to you for.
But is that site plan or conditional rezoning?
Conditional rezoning, because they can do that, that was a proposal on conditional zoning. And remember, it's either a yes.
Oh, yeah, or no, you don't, oh, yes.
Changes that you, that it comes through the end of the site.
So again, well, Michelle's return basically, cause a lot of times with the the site plan, in most cases, we're probably guarding this, right, correct, Michelle, I mean, the most, but it does because it was tied directly that conditional. Rezoning request, and we don't have that ability to go back and forth, that's why, I was wondering about that entrance, it's even on their sign there, constructed.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess that's a downside title, conditional only takes them to another meeting, but.
Okay, um, so. Yes, I'm anticipating this, but literally, if we did vote for this change, they'd have to go.
They have to do, yes.
Something to think about for any future conditional rezoning is whether the site man has to be. Does not necessarily need to be, you could grant, you could have. They need to offer a condition for setup. And they have, not that the site man is in a condition of like, something that would be much. Less easy. Um, so again, that's another thing to think about, if when you're going through that process, is that second step? Or if it comes back, what needs to be attached to it, um, because if they're making site plan changes, and you have to open up conditional zoning.
Is, yeah, it's a big question, is there value in retaining more control?
There, there can be now, continue more. Um, and then, on the flip side of that, every time you retain more control, it gives the. And the future more, less flexibility to be action things in the future. And so I think there's a balance there, and I've seen some communities go way far in terms of control. Um, and then I've seen others where it's been much too. So I think it's a case by case basis, um, and to really think about not only what's in front of you. But what might happen six months, six years, sixteen years in the future. With that time.
I think so, that's interesting, and maybe we can, because, yeah, I think in an RAS, you still a little different, cause we get separated though, so the site plan, like the conditions weren't linked, like how we did it here, so maybe. Cause right, I think that would be, i- if this wasn't linked to the conditional rezoning, Michelle, would it be almost like an administrative, because it's so minor, they're just taking off.
It it really would depend, um.
Okay, so, but I think, I guess, sorry, my point was, it's just that, it it, right, I I think maybe we should look into that, cause if we're getting another conditional rezoning next month or so for the. For the a brewery, there might be a way that we don't necessarily have to, because they could still come back for a site plan separately than having to redo the zoning, so it's like, we could still have. Our control in a way, and then not have them like do a baby switch, but not have it on all the whole rezoning, so maybe that's something, I don't know if we need to set it up a little bit, but that might be. A little bit easier, I think, for the applicants now, cause you're right, things change all the time on on site plans, we all, I mean, they. So, and this seems relatively minor, that they have to just remove, that, and especially things, I think it's something that we all then feels crucial to the project, it's different if it was an element. That's integral to the project, but an entryway, so.
You could also in the development agreement layout, they, the applicant could lay out what those terms are. In terms of what's my error, who would we come to, things like that.
Yeah.
It, I was just, you will probably get other conditional rezoning.
Right, exactly, this is gonna be one more comment.
That process and what, again, control versus flexibility, and you're not only thinking, cause it's a rezoning. You're not only thinking about the present applicant, you're talking about any future owner.
Right. So, okay, so maybe, I don't know, Michelle, is there a better way to kind of help us spell that out for the commission for the next month's rezoning, so that we know that for a start? Cause yeah, I think that we could still maintain that control, but. Structure in a way that's not as cumbersome in the long run, so. But, um, okay, so, uh, well, that's I indeed actually here on the, uh, and just perhaps the eighty one eighty Main Street proposal, and again, I think I'll just say, Michelle, is a. A play, like if if they're not necessarily ready, I think we feel as a commission that we don't necessarily need to push them through, but I mean, I know there'll be pressure to, but I think more times, probably better.
It's become much easier, thankfully, um, for the direction that the plan and commission came.
Good, thank you, yeah, I want to reenter, yes, Karen.
Why does it need to be a conditional resort? Anyone?
It doesn't need to be, but the proposal that they had brought in front of staff, and then the pre-application committee was a straight rezoning. And the pre-applicant. Was very clear that the reason he was asking for it was he didn't want to take the party.
Yeah, so that's. If you haven't watched the, you should watch the movie. For what the pre-application, oh, I didn't know you did that thing.
Yeah, I've had it, I can listen to you.
Yes, if you could, please. Thank you.
Jim's a member of the committee and could not attend, that's why we got him.
Okay. Yeah, 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 thank you.
I commend, I commend staff for their patience in the face of. Some frankly, pretty difficult stuff.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you after, alright, um, okay, and then possibly the approved amended condo documents for granted, cameras. Well, yes, alright, um, citizens wishing to address the commission. Is he here, any online? Good, um, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Luke, pardon? Oh, sorry, I didn't hear. Adjourn, alright, thank you.